Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly Smith, and I am the Planning and Community Development Director for the City of East Point Planning and Community Development Department. And we also have Mr. Lee Kelly, who is the Assistant Director of the Planning and Community Development Department for the City of East Point. Tonight is our community zoning information meeting. And we have one case, and in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to a PowerPoint presentation, and we're gonna go through the agenda. Let me give a few more minutes for the community to log on. Okay. Mr. Suber, how may I help you?
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I had a quick connection, I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you perfectly fine, thank you. If you could unraise your hand, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to be sharing my screen. One moment. Hopefully, everyone can see my screen. Says City of East Point June Community Zoning Information Meeting. Okay, the purpose of the Community Zoning Information Meeting is based out of our zoning ordinance, Section ten dash two, two, three, four. Purpose: A community zoning information meetings were established for the presentation of all applications regarding our rezonings, zoning modifications, variances, special use permits, subdivision, minor and preliminary plots, and other related land use petitions. And furthermore, the CZIM meetings, the intent and purpose is to allow the applicants an opportunity to present their applications, to allow citizens of East Point the opportunity to review all applications submitted and ask questions to the applicant and express any preliminary concerns in reference to the petitions that are being set forth. The third intent and purpose is to provide for a standard meeting location, date, and time. And we have chosen the Zoom platform for the time, place, and meeting location, which is our virtual meeting. And the fourth reason and purpose of the community zoning information meetings is to allow for issues, concerns, to be addressed in a public forum in the presence of citizens, our staff, and other city staff in attendance. CZIM ground rules. I'll go through these pretty quickly. One person speaks at a time, please mute when you are not speaking. Questions and comments are extremely encouraged. All questions and comments will be asked and addressed once the last applicant has presented. Please use raise hand feature to be addressed. You may also use the chat function only for relevant questions and comments. Please use respectful and positive language when speaking. Actively listen to each applicant and attendee. Address disagreements in a respectable manner. Avoid personal attacks or offensive language. Be concise and considerate of others who will always want to contribute and minimize distractions by silencing or putting away your mobile devices. For this evening, we have one case. And I'm gonna take a quick attendance, but Mr. Suber has already made it known that he is present. So, Mr. Suber, you are present. Just making sure, testing that you're, you're good again.
I am here.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Um, project overview by the applicant's property owners um, is next. Uh, but first, our first case and only case is case number two zero two four RZ zero zero one dash zero six. The applicant is Restore Consulting Group LLC. The applicant is known as Douglas Suber. The property location is zero Dunlap Avenue. The applicant is seeking to rezone property from R1A Urban Residential Zoning District to RT Residential Town Home, Townhouse Zoning District with concurrent variances for the maximum height, the front and rear yard setbacks. The case type is a rezoning with concurrent variances. To give you a brief overview of the application uh, just prior to the applicant presenting and providing more details, pretty much stated that it is a rezoning petition with concurrent variances. The current property of the, of the parcel is R1A. If you could see here, here's a overview map of the property outlined in the light blue area, that is the site. The property has a, a current zoning of R1A, as stated. The proposal is for RT. This is a copy of our zoning map in the blue color. Our future land use map for this particular parcel is redevelopment neighborhood. And at this time, I will allow for Mr. Suber to provide an overview of his project. And then after that, we can answer questions um, from any of the participants. Mr. Suber, if you have a PowerPoint, I can give you the opportunity and authority to share the screen if you need it. Otherwise, you can tell us about your project.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Douglas Suber. Um, I acquired this piece of property through tax lien through Fulton County. Um, the previous owner um, had a deed to the property uh, before uh, COVID nineteen. And um, I guess they just pretty much went to let the, the property go. Um, there was an opportunity to purchase this property, and I found that it would be a great, um, it'd be a I guess a, a good project to put um, a residential townhome community in that area. Um, that area of East Point is pretty much um, well-established. Um, it's a very uh, great middle-class area, and I felt like a project would go great there. The, the property has, um, I was able to get about twenty units on it. Um, north of the property, you have um, some housing uh, apartments across the street. On the Dunlap Avenue uh, street, that's the north side. And on the south side, you have a cul-de-sac there with uh, single-family homes. So I felt like it would be a great mix to pretty much add um, some residents um, over in that area. The property will be uh, gated. It will have uh, amenities on that property uh, for the homeowners. The property is pretty difficult um, due to, it's, I think it's like a twenty-one degree slope there. I took a full uh ESA, which is uh, an environmental site analysis. And you know, there's no contamination or anything on that site. Um, there's minimal wildlife on there, just pretty much insects and um, a lot of trees. One of the main trees is on that, on that property is called an English ivy. So that was a good idea for me to pretty much uh, rename or actually name this property with those two words, English ivory. Um, I haven't really came up with the whole thing yet, but um, it would be a great impact to East, East Point. Um, the, the homes will be three-bedroom, uh, two, two and a half. Uh, they'll have a sun deck. Um, it would be great for kids, great for families. Haven't really thought about the price point yet, but uh, it won't be under you know, three fifty, four hundred thousand. So I do know that part. In the uh, the site that I have here, um, you'll see some challenges that I'm going through right now, uh, which is highlighted um, in blue and orange. Um, but I feel like it'll still bring a positive impact to uh, to the community. Um, one of the things that I did find that there is a setback, and I would really asking for um, some sort of cooperation with relieving these due to the project and due to, you know, it would be a great asset to the, you know, the City of East Point. Um, I don't know how further I can go into that, but I just wanna, you know, as Ms. Smith said, I'm just giving you guys a a quick overview. Um, I wanna take any questions or anything of that sort.
Hey, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen for a moment. We have sixteen participants on, and there's one hand raised. So gonna go to that hand to allow them to speak. This caller is on an iPhone seven. Okay, you should be able to speak. Okay, you should be joining as a panelist, and you will be allowed to speak. Okay. Okay, you can ask your question. You have to unmute yourself. One of the questions, Mr. Suber, is what is the plan for parking?
Oh, the plan for parking for, for um, the parking will actually go on the first floor. Um, it'll go on the um, the main entry floor, and then the um, the living area will be on top, will be on the second and third floor. Um, residential parking, additional resident, additional residential parking will be um, incorporated into this plan. This is only the, the first um, pretty much uh, iteration of this, but it uh, we have to incorporate a few more parking spaces due to the ratio and for guest parking.
Okay. Thank you for the response. I'm going to go to the other hands that were raised. Mr. Pierce? You can ask your question now?
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. Um, I'm a resident on English Lane, which has been a cul-de-sac since its existence. Um, it looks like the primary driveway is coming at the end of English Lane. Is there also additional access via Dunlap Avenue? Or is everything coming through English Lane?
Great question, Mr. Pierce. Um, so Dunlap Avenue um, has a slope. If there would be any entrances on that side, it would be going downward. Um, I found it, uh, I, I found that in doing this feasibility report. Um, when I, when I did a feasibility report, it would be easier to have access on English Avenue. Um, there won't be uh, there won't be additional uh, traffic due to cars, but it won't be to the point where it, it should be like a major disturbance to the area.
Okay, twenty townhomes will triple the number of homes on English Lane. Um, and since you're not having an access via Dunlap, one concern we had was that it would be a drive-through from Dunlap down into English and open up additional traffic. So if this is a gated community with uh, English Lane access only to residents and guests, at least that limits the um, the access to actual homeowners of down English Lane.
Yeah, I see what you're asking me. If there were um, I think when I went over this question with my engineer, um, because we're keeping it at, uh, I think fewer than thirty, I believe, homes, there's only um, we only would need one entryway. So I do see what you're saying um, on Dunlap. But if I were, but if it were to be, if the residence would be pretty much doubled as to what you would see right now, I would have to increase um, because it'll be a fire hazard, um, fire truck access, water safety. I mean, there's a lot of things that comes into play when it comes to um, the amount of homes and the capacity and bandwidth. So, and then, you know, the fire truck entry, so forth, so.
Right.
Does that answer your question, sir?
It does if you're limiting the access to English Lane and it's gated. Um, is the entire community gated as in a fence around the community um, on Dunlap on and on side?
Yes. Yes, it will be. Yes, sir. And it'll be, um, as you can see in the, in the front, it'll only be uh, one entryway, and then um, sanitation will be right outside, but it won't be on the street. So that'll be only, you know, it'll be in a discreet area, as you can kind of see on the map.
Okay. Um, one thing that you might take note of is that the street is so narrow that when the garbage truck from College Park comes in, it has to back down the street and does not allow to go down frontwards, which if you're having dumpsters, you'd have to have front access to pick up the dumpster, et cetera. And, and since this is an East Point property, I'm not sure, are you handling uh, sanitation via East Point or College Park? Or, or private?
Um, I do, uh, great question. I mean, great uh, response. I, I do see a point um, as far as sanitation. That'll be worked out with my engineer. But there is, that cul-de-sac, I believe, is enough um, room to, to do a three sixty, if not a three-point park, a three-point turn um, in order to get out. Um, and I will also look into into that as well. So that's not a problem.
All right. That's all the questions I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Um, we have quite a few questions. Um, one question for or from um, iPhone seven, that's the only name that I have here, and I think they were wanting to speak before um, they typed in their, their question. What is the entrance plan? Where is the entrance planned? And I'll see if I could put the map back up.
The entrance plan um, uh, is on English Avenue, and it turns in on the left. And you can see, there's an arrow that says the gate. Uh, there's a dotted line, and it curves in. Ms. Smith, can you expand that?
As I
For this person, so, yeah, if you can just explain that area.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd be a left turn.
English Lane, left turn into the, the entry.
Yes.
Let's see.
Does that
From here, this way, that way.
Yes.
Red, red was a bad color. Okay. Kind of blended in, but, okay, so that's the entryway. Um, it's like Lauren has her hand up. I'm going to unmute or ask Lauren to unmute herself to speak.
Hi, my name is Lauren Hartley. I'm also a resident on English Lane. And I don't particularly have a question now that you've answered the, the gate. Um, I just wanna state my overall concern. Um, English Lane is a, um, only has about ten or eleven houses on it. It's a very small, narrow road with lots of families and lots of children. And uh, I feel pretty concerned that there's going to be, you know, you say twenty units plus, you know, spouses, that's at least, you know, two residents per unit, probably more than that potentially. Um, that's just gonna add a lot of traffic. Um, once it's built, I have a lot of concerns about um, trucks and things during building. Um, I guess, you know, living on this road, one of the most things I prize is the how quiet and how I know all of the neighbors and uh, really enjoy the serenity of how quiet and low traffic it is. And I'll add to the, um, sorry, I'll add to the turnaround. My husband drives a small Ford Ranger, and he cannot turn around, um, even in like a three-point turn in that cul-de-sac. So I would be pretty surprised if a dump truck or something would be able to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate your concern. Um,
Okay.
To my end, yeah.
Oh, go ahead. I was gonna go to the question.
No, I, no, I was gonna say that I really appreciate what she's saying. I really appreciate her, her concern. I'll take that into consideration.
Thank you. Um, the next question is from Stephanie. That's a lot of trees on the lot. Is the plan to clearcut? Can the developer make a plan to maintain as many of those trees as possible?
Absolutely, Stephanie. Um, that is the plan. Um, as I said earlier, the tree, um, when I walked the site, and I got a little bit of the backstory of that property, the majority of those trees, um, from what the um, the analysis, um, she told me that it was English ivy. So I was gonna pretty much use that name and spin it into the property, uh, the name of the property, and I wanted to preserve as many of those trees as possible. The only bad thing is that English Ivy, she said um, that you wouldn't really want that to touch your skin. So uh, it's very irritable. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to kind of work with those trees as much as possible. Um, I have to get with an arborist, and I gotta pretty much assess where specifically and how many. Um, I did a survey, and I got a good amount of trees, but I, but I really need to understand like what I can and can't keep, and what would be um, not sufficient to keep in a, in a project, in a residential project, because I don't wanna um, I don't wanna create uh, a situation. Uh, so that is definitely, definitely on the top agenda um, of this project. Hopefully, answers your question.
And also, um, in reference to the question and the tree coverage on the site, um, Mr. Suber did come through a conceptual plan review process where all of our technical reviewers uh, review the concept and make comments based on their technical expertise. One of the comments was from um, the city arborist, and that was that a landscape plan would be required. We do have a tree ordinance, which is my understanding that it would not allow for clearcutting of the trees. And we also have a tree bank um, as well, and a replacement, tree replacement um, regulations, where if trees are taken down, um, a certain percentage of them will have to be replanted and um, maintained through a landscape plan that, that is required um, through the land development process. So um, and it is the intent to protect the trees, as many as can be protected. But this particular set of trees, as stated by Mr. Suber, um, may have a um, a certain impact that, that we may not be looking for. So we're always here to protect the health, safety, welfare of the, of the public in the community as well. But there are tree regulations that will be applied to this project. Um, the next question is, okay, I believe you answered this, but it's for, from Kari. Is there a plan for the area access into English Lane? I believe the answer to that is yes. Where's the entrance plan was another question. It's off of English Lane.
It's on the south part. Um, the bottom right, um, you'll see the, you see English Lane, and then you'll make a left, you'll turn into the property, turn onto the property, actually.
Okay. And there's another question. Could you explain what is depicted on a northwest corner of the lot?
Northwest, I think that is where okay, all right, is this gentleman um, talking about the blue and the red? Or um, that's what I'm thinking, northwest. Could this person respond back? Maybe a type.
Tony is the name.
Okay, Tony. Are you talking about the, the blue and the red lines when you say the, the northwest? Could you be a little bit more specific?
Mr. Suber, this is
Yeah.
This is Assistant Director Kelly. Yes, sir, that's, that's the area that he's talking about. This is Assistant Director Kelly. Yes, sir, that's, that's the area that he's talking about.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The top left corner.
And what's his name again? What's the gentleman's name?
Tony.
Tony, Tony, Tony. Tony, how are you? Um, let me explain a little bit what this is. Um. My surveyor and my uh engineer who's working closely on it, are working closely on the site and we noticed that there. There are what you would call, um, um, there's a buffer and then there's a setback. And those are, so. The setback is pretty much um what was, or what is put in place. Um, as well as um the undisturbed and buffer variance. That's by the city of East Point. So, um. I would need, so what you're seeing is just an outline of. Where there's a stream that runs through, um. And I believe, yeah, so you see a stream running through that, the middle of that curve. And uh. That's. What is what I would call a challenge that I, that that's on that site. And it's just letting me know what the city has put in place. So, um, that's what you're looking at. Did I answer your question, sir? Tony.
There was another question about the stream. So. And what the question says is, what are the plans to protect the stream on the property, including runoff in the parking lot?
Stone water, stone water management, um, I, I'm gonna have to pretty much. Um, encase that and kind of do an underground stone water facility. Um, total preservation is definitely gonna put in place, whether it's a bridge. Um, whether it's um some sort of uh protective barrier to pretty much not disturb that. There's um a twenty-five foot uh undisturbed buffer that has been placed there. And I would love for that to be uh removed, but that's gonna be a pretty much hard sell. So I gotta, I gotta. Figure out a way on how to pretty much preserve that. Um. In the greatest way possible, and we're looking at maybe like a, a bridge or something like that, something very aesthetically pleasing to the property. But nothing that will um prevent any type of pollution, nothing like that would be put in place. So. To answer your question.
I have a question about the dream. Is it a, a blue line stream where you, there's water or is it just? On the Georgia Stream maps?
It's on a Georgia Stream lap, map, but it's a, it's a very low volume. Stream that kind of flows through that property.
Okay, am, am I seeing a lot number nine and ten?
You are, you're seeing what, what with the stream?
Yes.
No, 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 no. The. The stream. It could, yeah, so. Wait. I think that he put it there. I think that it's there, but I think that it's pretty much. He sent this to me and he told me that it was further up. Uh, it's either that other, it's one of those bl- blue lines is, it's either the one that's up. Further up than that, or it's the. The other blue line that's below it.
Okay.
All right.
Alright, well, those streams will have to be identified, but um let's see what other type of. Questions we have here. Let me see if there are any other ones.
Where we can't.
Is that Mister Tony, is that Tony talking? Do you have a question? There's Camilla and Tony. Do you all have questions? Another question?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll mute you now. Thanks. Um, so another question is. Also, would residents get a police and fire service from East Point or College Park?
Great question. Um, that would be something that. Those uh municipalities will have to determine and tell me which one serves what. Um, because of the entrance way, because the position of, of that property. So. Um, I believe either one of them would be um. Further down the line and any uh additional meetings. Um, they would just have to tell me which one they would uh be servicing on that side. Because I think the north side would be more. East Point, but the south side is more College Park. So it's kind of a. But they all fall under East Point City Council. Uh, it's, yeah, it's very undetermined at this point.
Okay, I see. And part of that question or the first part of that question was. How do you anticipate working with College Park, given the only access is on a street located in College Park? And I would assume that the English Lane is in College Park. This property is on the line, so.
Yes, English Lane is more on College Park. And um Dunlap is more so on East Point.
Okay. There's another question from Jason Corman. It says units eight, nine and ten. Look like they're built directly on the driveway for two fifteen English Lane. It could be just an artifact of the map. But are you looking to reassess the property lines to account for it?
So. That's a very great, great question. Uh, and what we found out is that the property next door. Is the way that the driveway is situated. It's more so on my property. Um, there's a portion, there's a portion of that driveway on my property and there's a. A portion that's, that's not on, on Dunlap. So that's um. An additional challenge and a conversation that I need to have with the owner of that. Um, that property to figure out a great solution on how we can both. Uh, benefit from um. The encroachment. So. Um, not trying to, just trying to, you know, have a conversation and. And figure out the greatest solution that's, that's possible. So totally understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Did I answer their question?
Um, I'm assuming so. Um, so the next question is, what communications have you had with College Park, if any?
I haven't had any communications with College Park at this point. Being that the um, the property address falls on a East Point address. Um, this address is listed as Zero Dunlap Avenue, East Point, Georgia, three oh three four four. So.
Okay. Uh, another question, is there a way to rework the plan so that the entrance is entirely in East Point? Um, they fear the ifiness issues with police utilities, fire department. Maybe a bigger issue for residents in the future.
Um. The, can really, can you repeat the, the, the question, the first half was, is there a way to rework the entrance way?
Yeah, is there a way to rework the site plan so the entrance is in East Point, entirely in East Point? To alleviate any issues or concerns for the services such as fire, utilities and police?
Well, we'll go over both scenarios, see what will be the best case. Um, if for any reason, um, you know. Uh, further due diligence is, is being done and. And it would be problematic or um it would be an issue. Definitely, um, there will be consideration put forth in uh revising the plan. So, um, we can get the best entrance uh to the property um as possible.
Okay. Assistant Director Kelly, you have a question, a response?
No, I just, well, w- one, I just wanted to share with everyone. Um. Typically, when you have a case like this, I mean, this is nothing uncommon when you have properties. Uh, basically at the proper, at the jurisdictional limits. Uh, these municipalities, these emergency services, they have their own. Intergovernmental agreements to where they share those boundary limits. Uh, so chances are there's probably something already worked out with College Park, City of East Point. To where if something should happen at this particular location, uh, whose services what? Uh, I'm not necessarily trying to say I'm defending the applicant, but I just wanted to bring a point of clarity there. Two, with his access, his proposed access off of English Lane. Since it is located in College Park. He would actually have to make submission for that proposed access to College Park. This would be no different than if he was proposing a development that had an access off of a state highway. He would have to make application to the Georgia Department of Transportation. This is no different. In order for him to have access off of English Lane, he would actually have to submit. That plan to the City of College Park for their review and approval of his access. Uh, in order for him to proceed with the development on uh for his project. So I just wanted to kind of share that and. He, he may or may not be aware of that. I'm not sure. If Mister Suber is, but that would have to come through the City of College Park. The only time it would not, it would be if there's some type of agreement. With the City of College Park and the City of East Point's Public Works Department. Where they would uh handle that review, but it's, it's really rare that that would happen.
Thank you, Mister Kelly. There is a person. D U N N Dunn. Um, I see your hand is raised and. You can now speak and ask your questions. Okay, I'm gonna move on to Jason Corman.
Thank you. Uh, it's actually my wife, Erin.
Hi, um, I have a couple of concerns. Um, the width of our, of college, um, of English Lane. Through College Park is pretty concerning, um, considering the construction equipment that'll be up and down the road. It's a very narrow road. There's no sidewalks. There's fifteen children under the age of ten that live on this road. And if there was construction equipment on English Lane and there was an emergency, there would be absolutely no way for an emergency vehicle. To pass a construction vehicle, given the width of the road. Um. You are, uh, Mister Suber, you also mentioned that there is not a significant amount of wildlife. Um, and I don't find that to be true at all. We have, you know, families of deer, we have owls, we have hawks, we just have. Just an incredible amount of birds and wildlife in general. And I was just wondering what kind of. Um, report was done or if there was anything that has happened to um quantify or qualify that there. Is not significant wildlife there. Um, and I just, the lack of sidewalks on English Lane is also. Very concerning, given the amount of traffic that um will be here. We can assume if it's a three-bedroom town home, each town home will have at least two residents. And there's just, there's nowhere to put sidewalks on English Lane either, because the lots wouldn't allow for it. And I just wanted to put my concerns out there. I don't know if there's, I don't think I have a particular question. Um, just wanted to. Voice my opinion.
I appreciate that. Um. When I meant wildlife, um, I'm meaning uh any uh. Medium-sized animals living on the property. Um. Uh, yes, there is the wildlife that you're talking about that comes on, you know, the deer and so forth and so on, the birds. Um, I was just talking about something totally different. Um. So it would, you know, it would be my apologies if I miss, misspoke when I said that. Um, as far as sidewalks or um emergencies. Um, again, when um. This plan is proposed, um, all of those things has to be put in place into consideration. Um, when given approval, um, and there will be a. A work schedule as far as um the construction schedule, if there's any, um, you know, when. Construction starts, of course, um, it won't start at obscene hours and it won't end. Or, you know, c- carry over in um. Unpermitted time, so uh those things will actually be put in place as well. I'm not trying to disturb or harm or um create any type of negative impact to the community. I just wanna assure everyone that's on this call that um this would be a very beneficial. Uh, uh. Project for the community. Um, I just wanna, you know, just to say that. So I, I'm only here to add value. Um, I do have a listening ear. And um I wanna take as many questions as possible. And I wanna make you guys feel comfortable. So, um, I'm, I'm very accessible. So again, um. I am just trying to add value to the, to that. So those concerns will definitely be taken into consideration.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you for providing your comments. Um, the next person. I have done. Are you able to speak at this time?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, my name is Edward Dunn. I live in nineteen seventy eight lane. I live in the last house on English Lane. And I'm, I'm very concerned with this project, because uh I've been living here. Pretty much about thirty years. And I'm concerned with traffic, especially traffic. So if you open a entrance on this area, people from Vesta. Avenue will be coming down on English Lane too. So you got a whole complex on Vesta over there that. You would use the entrance and exit from that property. So how, how you gonna control that? That's it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Mister Suber, would you like to respond?
Oh, sure. No problem. Um. So the entryway is proposed to be on the English Lane side and there will be, um. It'll be a gated community, so there won't be any interference from Vesta. It won't have any access from the Vesta or the Dunlap side. It'll just remain the way that it is now. So, um, it won't run through. So um it won't run through, um, because I don't have a minimum, the certain minimum that's required to have two entrances. It only have one. So you won't be able to gain access off of Vesta or Dunlop. It'll just remain the way that it is. The only entrance way will be going down, I think it's Lyle to English Lane and turn into the to the property. That would only be the way to to that, to that development.
I think responsibility may all depend on the lifestyle.
Mr. Dunn, you were breaking up at the end. I didn't quite make out what you were saying.
As a uh, since I've been living there six years, thirty six, thirty eight years, I've been real quiet. That's one reason about that. I'm personally, I'm with that kind of change.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we have any other hands raised? I have a hand raised from Mr. Jason Corman. Was that from before or did you have another question?
Not that was from before. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. And I have a hand raised from Brad.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, so I live in College Park, um, on College Street, like right where College ends at um Vesta. So I can walk to this property. It's really close to me. And just one comment, um, I think that the applicant would get a lot less pushback from people if the entrance was off of Dunlap. This this Dunlap curve gets a lot of, um, you know, it's kind of a problem area. There's a lot of trash that builds up here. I'm I honestly, I was super excited to see these townhouses coming here because it's uh just an area that I think is ripe for development. And I was actually a little bummed to see that the entrance was not off Dunlap. So I think that you would get, uh, I guess a couple of comments. One, I think you would get a lot less pushback if the entrance is off of Dunlap. I know that's probably gonna have to make you change your entire site plan. But I would agree with the folks that live on English Avenue. Um, that's a very quiet street. Like I I can walk there from my house. If I go down off Lyle, um, I I would be, I think I'd be really upset if I lived on English Avenue and this was gonna be at the end of my street with all these additional residences. So I I mean, if if you could look at re- reconfiguring the the site plan for the entrance off Dunlap, I think you would get a lot less pushback from the community is one comment. And um I heard you talk about the English Ivy. Um, I've done some community service projects with Trees Atlanta. And um, you know, English Ivy is a, you know, it's a invasive species, but it is pretty easy to remove. I mean, we we've taken out groups from my company and done it for the day at parks in the East Point College Park area. So um, it can be pretty easily removed from trees. So um, yeah, I think that's all my comments, but um, uh, I got one question too. Um, I know, do you have any, are there any renderings or do you any images of what the proposed buildings would look like?
Hey, how are you? Um, what's your name again, sir?
Brad.
Brad, Brad. One quick question. Uh, the renderings um will be coming soon. Um, so that is something that is uh on the way. And two, which side do you live on, Brad? Do you live on the vested Dunlop side or do you live on the English Avenue, um, the English Lane side? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I'm on the um, I'm on the Dunlap side. So if you were to, on this map, if you were to just drive, I guess that would be east a couple of streets to where College Street. I think it's College and I think once it crosses the s- the city line, it's Francis north of the East Point line. Um, and just a little bit south on College Street.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Okay, checking for hands. Lauren, do you have another question or was that from a-
Yeah, my husband is with me and he wanted to ask something as well.
Yeah, I have a comment and then I guess a question. Um, my first comment's on the creek. Uh, you mentioned it was low volume. Uh, you're right. Uh, it is low volume, but there's water always running through it. And it runs through all our backyards. Um, my neighbor's kids playing it. It connects to the Flint River, uh, special river, one of the longest stretches of Undammed River. So it is impactful to us running through our property. And then uh, I wanted to ask about the drive on Dunlap. Um, you mentioned the hill and that being the reason to not do it there. Did an engineer tell you that or not? I just I feel as though you're choosing English Lane to add value to the property where if you wanted to add value to the community, you would choose Dunlap. So I'm just wondering who told you you couldn't handle that hill?
Thanks, Randy. Thanks for the question. Speaking of my engineer, um, we came up with, this is probably what you're looking at, is probably like the third iteration of this of this site plan. We've been playing around with it only because of the slope. If you notice property, you know that it's it is very steep. And it just pretty much has to make sense, even when it comes to water and sewer. As of now, you know, the proposed plan is to enter, is is to, is to enter off of um English Lane. Um, but again, we're we're still going back and forth. This is, it's it's very early. But we have to make a decision soon, um, how we're gonna pretty much um, what would be the best case scenario for the property? But for right now, it's leaning towards what you're looking at right now. Just to be perfectly honest and straight front with you, that's just pretty much the way it's looking. Um, for some, again, we have enough time for maybe one more review. But um, we're gonna, you know, continuously bounce ideas and see what would be the, you know, best proposed use for this, you know, for this property. So and where would it be feasible? In the whole project itself, what would just make sense, right? Because I, I mean, I have to for anyone that would, you know, wanna bring a a great project, great add value to a community, you have to figure, you have to answer that number one question is, you know, it just, you know, a project just has to make sense and and which way will be, you know, the the most feasible um, in doing so. So um, I appreciate your comment and hopefully it answers your question.
Um, I think that the main question that my husband was asking was whether or not an engineer had told you, because I understand a steep grade can be graded. If you can't tell, a lot of us on English Lane really are pushing back against this. And echoing that if it did exit on English or on English Lane, that would not really um bring anything to uh our street and our neighborhood and that it would much better be much better for the community on the other side, on the Dunlap side. So um, I understand, you know, coming in through English is probably easier, flatter, et cetera. Um, but it's gonna add a lot of headache and a lot of stress to all of us who have lived here for a long time. And um, I think that my husband wanted to know specifically if you had an engineer tell you you could not come in from Dunlap. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as I said earlier, yeah, my, I spoke to my engineer. We were bouncing this plan back and forth and what makes sense. What side are we gonna use and what just pretty much makes sense for the project? And um, yeah, I totally understand. But to answer your question, my engineer, that's just pretty much where it kind of flows right now. And that's only because of the slope and that becomes because what happens is is if it's, if it's, of of course, the property is gonna be graded, it has to be. I have to add, I mean, there's a lot of things I have to do to kind of make this thing make sense. But where it stands now, it'll be um on English Avenue. I mean, sorry, English Lane. And my engineer is um the one who I am going back and forth with as far as working out the best, the best case scenario on this project.
Thank you for the question and the response. I have one hand left raised and it's someone by the name of Cameron.
Uh, hello, yes, uh, my name's Cameron. I live on English Lane, uh, second to last house at the end of the cul-de-sac next to the Duns. And uh, I would just like to echo the same concerns that all the other English Lane folks have raised here about adding these uh additional congestion to this very quiet street. This is, I mean, the main reason why we bought here, I would say, is because it was a cul-de-sac that, you know, was gonna be very quiet as we raise our kids here. And a a couple of questions I have is uh, in terms of the uh sewer for these twenty homes, is this going to be tying in at all to our existing um sanitation here? Because I will tell you that for whatever reason, one downside of this street is probably every three to six months, the city has to come out and uh uncake the, I guess sewage in the manhole covers, like they have to come and pop the covers and and clean it out basically because it consistently gets uh backed up and will result in, you know, flooding. So I'm very concerned if you're having, you know, sewage from twenty homes coming into that system. You know, has there been any kind of study of whether it can handle that?
Um, right now, we um, at this point, we located where sewer and water is at. We found that we do have to tie in. Um, we definitely have to tie in the water, definitely have to tie in the sewer. And we'll get the capacity and the bandwidth of it in a few more weeks. But we just, at this point, um, there should be no issues with tying in. As far as um the amount of pressure and things of that nature, that'll be a determination um from the City of East Point.
The City of East Point. So they've already-
Well, I'm I'm sorry, Fulton County. I mean, that will be a decision that they would have to make as far as um moving this project because all of those things have to be taken into consideration. The amount of of the capacity of homes tying into the line, um, tying in your concerns, things of that nature.
Okay, and just in terms of uh that waterway, and I apologize, I missed the first thirty minutes or so. I- is there um, could anyone elaborate on like what would be the on the the creek there?
What would be, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Like, was there gonna be some sort of a negative impact to the creek?
No, I am not trying to create a negative impact to the creek. Um, that is not even a possibility. That's not what we're trying to do at all. If anything, it's in the preservation, so.
Like, one thing that I think should definitely be looked at is anytime we get a big storm, this uh cul-de-sac at English Lane also has significant flooding because of the fact that, well, partially just because of the the way that the water comes down, but we have this like culvert here that's right in my yard. And it will, it's it's only got like two little relatively small pipes for that creek to pass underneath English Lane to get to the other side of the road. So that creates a bit of a choke point where there is also significant flooding when we get a big storm. So like, I'm not sure exactly what the, I think the effect of, you know, having another road with additional hardscaping and everything, like what's gonna be the impact of sending additional water down to this cul-de-sac where the flooding could become uh even worse essentially?
Where are you located, sir?
I'm at nineteen eighty, West Lane.
Nineteen eighty, okay. What I can do is, um, oh, what I have to do actually is when um our sewer plan is designed, those are the things that I'll pay special attention to. I don't know how far down you are and I don't know how far down we have to uh tie in. And um, uh, so again, those things will uh, those additional homes um on the, you know, along the way as I'm tying in will be taken into consideration um when trying to figure out this whole plan. I really appreciate you letting me know that there is um some concerning with uh flooding on that side because it just makes the plan. It's it's easy to look at a plan when you know, you know, that there is um an issue upfront. So as as, you know, my engineer continued to look at the water plan, water sewer plan, um, I'll let him know um about your concern at nineteen eighty and how it flows down, so.
Yeah, just have him come visit when we wait about fifty minutes and you'll see it backing up.
Okay.
And then uh, the the only other question-
And does it flood more down at the at the cul-de-sac side? Like where, like is, or is it more in front of your side?
My property is the uh, it is, I would say into the like as well, it's sort of, um, it's actually funny. The first couple of weeks that I uh, we moved in several years ago, we got a big storm with like a, it was due to one of those hurricanes that came in and uh, there was probably like two feet on the street and going up against Dunn's house and I, I, you know, we were near the area, so we didn't know that this was kind of a regular current. So I went over there and said, hey, you guys okay? Yada, yada. But anyways, uh, so yeah, that's something to definitely look. And then, you know, same thing, if if you're gonna be getting out a bunch of trees and vegetation and all that in order to put in the homes, I it's, I I only fear it would get worse.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. It doesn't look like there are any other questions. Um, we appreciate everyone's input. And what happens next with this project? Oh, I see another hand go up. Let's see. Okay. You can ask your question now, yes?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I actually asked him a question on the Q and A. Um, I just wanted to know how you, how you planned on interacting. What what are your plans to work with College Park and the residents of English Lane? How do you plan to to work with us?
Your question is how do I, I'm sorry, how do I plan to work with you?
How do you plan to communicate and work with the people of English Lane? And clearly, you're gonna be affecting our lives there. So I would hope that you would want to have some kind of relationship with us.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I don't, I mean, I I plan on what I would like to do is actually meet everyone on that, um, along that, along that street. Again, I, I, you know, I'm not trying to hide or disrupt or create anything negative as far as on the impact of any residences in that in that community and on that lane. So any residences in that, in that community and on that lane, so, um, you know, as time goes on, I, I don't have a problem with, you know, I would love to work with you, I would love to understand exactly what, you know, your concerns are, and if there's anything that you know, within means of the plan that I can help alleviate, I don't have a problem with doing so.
That's great, yeah, I mean, just come walk down the road, you know, one evening, enjoy the silence.
I, I mean, I, I mean, I'm very hands-on, look, look, I'm, I'm, I'm being, I'm, I'm a very hands-on person, like, I mean, this is, this is, I mean, this is a temporary uh, this is not long-term, um, this is, you know, the construction, the, the construction, um, the project.
All the traffic from the residents, that's definitely permanent, sir.
Well, you know what, you, you're right, there is gonna be an increase of, of, of cars coming up and down the road, you're absolutely right, um, that's something that I, you know, I can't not say that is not going to happen. That is actually a definite. But my plan is actually just to have, you know, a great community, um, you know, uh, in that area, I don't, you know, there will be, you know, there are changes. And, um, you know, the changes is hopefully even for the better. My intention is not to personally, you know, disturb anyone there, but unfortunately.
I would have to develop, but wouldn't, uh, go out to antagonize people on the same token, I would hope that, that a developer would reach out to the residents to hear their concerns and to make concessions, you know, negotiate if possible. And I was also wondering, how, how you plan to work with College Park, I mean, have you, what, what's your next step with College Park, because I see that you're working with East Point with this hearing, but we, those two signs at the end of the street are only for East Point. And we asked our councilwoman about this today and she didn't have any information about it. So it, it, it appears that College Park doesn't know anything about this.
Well, again, um, to answer your question, um, the signs are placed there, um, at the beginning of the week. And to be honest with you, I, I did, I did receive a call earlier today. Um, regarding, I don't know, someone maybe on the other side actually called. Yeah, 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 I, I, I did get it, um, but hope, and now it's great because now I have you um, on the line, um. But yeah, I'm not, uh, that address, um, again, that address just falls in the East Point, um, uh, city of East Point, and that's just who I've um, acknowledged and that's who has been handling everything, um. I would definitely have to reach out to College Park, I definitely have to, you know, reach out and pretty much introduce myself and let them know as well. And hopefully, you know, they can join us, you know, in, in the near future on any of these meetings, and like I said, I'm just here to alleviate and to answer, and there was eh, you know, any concerns that, you know, any, anyone in the, in the neighborhood may have. So, just want you to, um, hopefully I answered your question on that point, but I do have to reach out to East Point, um, I'm sorry, College Park after this call, so. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone, I don't see any other hands up, I'll check, um, before we, we get off, just to see if there are any last questions, um. But I did want to let you all know what the zoning case cycle is for this particular pro- project. It falls under our cycle deadline that ended on June seventh. Uh, tonight is the community zoning information meeting. Purpose and intent is for the community to ask questions of the applicant, which we have done. And you all have done, so thank you for your participation and, and logging on to the meeting, we have four additional meetings in reference to this project. Uh, moving forward in the zoning cycle, the next meeting is the Planning Commission Work Session for the City of East Point. It is held on the second Thursday of the month, uh, which is next month, July eleventh. Uh, should be the second Thursday. And that is a time for the applicant to provide information about the project to our Planning Commission, which is our recommending body, to our council. Um, it's their time to ask questions about the project after the applicant has had the opportunity to it's the time for the Planning Commission to ask questions after the applicant has presented to them. That meeting is a virtual meeting like this, um, Community Zoning Information Meeting is, um, and I could assure you that the notes that we have down today from the meeting, I could tell you I have I don't know, about four or five pages back and front of written notes um, and concerns that were raised by the community. Um, it doesn't matter whether you're East Point resident, City of College Park resident, the concerns will be brought forward to Planning Commission and provided to them, and I could assure you they're gonna ask. And about the, uh, questions and concerns that were raised and you're, you'll be welcome to, to attend those meetings as well. Um, the third Thursday of the month is our Planning Commission meeting where the Planning Commission will have the opportunity to take action, their action is in the form of a recommendation um, as stated previously, and that recommendation, um, will go forward as a recommendation of approval, denial, approval comments, it just depends on, on what they uh, come up with as a body to move forward to the City of East Point Council. Um, all of our zoning petitions are required to go through a city council work session meeting, and that work session meeting with this, um, within this cycle is going to be held on the second Monday of August. Um, those are our work session days for city councils, the second Monday. Um, there are all those meetings, our city council meetings are all in person at twenty seven twenty seven East Point Street, held in our ca- city council chambers. Those are all in person, planning commission meetings are virtual as this meeting is, city council meetings are all in person. The entire community is welcome to come out at the work session to hear further um, about, um, the project where the applicant is required to present to council. Council will ask questions, um, about the project of the applicant. And, um, and so that's what happens there. Uh, planning commissions, concerns, conditions, and that sort of, all of those things will be provided to council at the work session. The following Monday, which is the third Monday of the month for City East Point City Council is where the public hearing will be held and there will be a time for, um, anyone who wants to make a public comment for or against the project will have the opportunity to do so. You also have the opportunity to make public comment at the Planning Commission meeting that's gonna be on July the eighteenth as well, just wanted to make you aware that, that second Planning Commission meeting, there's a public hearing as well. Um, but that fifth meeting for city council to be held on August nineteenth, the third Monday, that's the public hearing where council will have the opportunity, if they see fit, to take action on the project. I will say, given the the concerns brought up about the, the trees as well as the stream on the, the project. Uh, those will be factors that I know that our staff will be looking at, um, with our arborists and our engineers and our water and sewer department. Um, so we'll be looking very, very closely to get comments back in reference to those items and what buffers are required um, and any regulations, um, for tree save. I know that we have regulations for, uh, landscape plans. And really all of the cons, the, the questions and concerns will be taken forward to our technical review team who will have the opportunity to make comments during our, our staff report, um, when we're writing our staff reports up. Um, and none of the comments will be taken lightly, um, our intent is to protect the health, safety, welfare of the community, all of the community, um, no matter whether you're in East Point or, or College Park, but all of the impacted interested parties, all of the accounts will be taken into account. And I think I saw one hand go up, so gonna circle back around um, to see if there were any additional questions asked while I was speaking. Now I saw a hand raised, let me see.
I, I think that might have been mine, I, I put it back down though because you explained the, the next steps very clearly, so, a- all good, thank you.
Okay, well, great, um, and, um, you're welcome to, to write letters, um, to our, our department. Uh, we'll take all, any letters you may have, you can bring them in person, you can mail them in, you could email them to our email address, zoning@eastpointcity.org. I could put that in the chat as well. And also, this meeting is being recorded. And it is my understanding that we will have it available on our website, if not on our, um, available on YouTube, so you'll have availability and access for anyone who joined the meeting, um, after six thirty after it started. You'll have the option to review it again online. Just check out our website, or you can email us for directions or assistance at zoning@eastpointcity.org. And with that, I'm going to conclude the meeting, again, I wanna thank everybody um, for all of their comments, concerns, questions, participation. And, um, I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening, it appears that Mister um, Super will be reaching out to you all on English Lane um, and walking the property, I think that's what I heard him say and coordinating with, with the community, and so that's a, a great thing. And, uh, enjoy your evening and Mister Super, I, I'll let you close it out if you have any, anything to say, close out.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Miss Smith, thank you, um, Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee Kelly. Um, everyone, I really appreciate your, your concerns, your questions, feel free to, uh, to keep them coming, I wanna make you feel as comfortable as possible about this project. And again, I'm only trying to add a value, um, I understand that there's a lot of um, how should I say, uh, uh, calmness, um, on that side. Um, but again, I'm not trying to make this a long-term project, I'm not trying to, um, you know, uh, bring anything that, um, will cause a negative impact um, to the, uh, the English Lane sign, so just want you guys to know that, um, and I look forward to hearing, um, your concerns, again, um, any additional concerns that you may have. Um, I'm looking forward to actually, uh, to hearing those out. And I thank everyone for all the time today.
Uh, thank you, Mister Super, that will conclude our Community Zoning Information Meeting on this evening. And, um, and we will be in touch, and we have four more meetings to go, so we're not going anywhere, and, um, good night and thank you.